I'm waiting on you, Gary. You ready?
Go.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to March 16th council meeting. If you have a cellphone, please turn it off, and we'll call this meeting to order. We'll start with a moment of silence, please. Thank you, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Wheaton.
Kraus.
Here.
Brent.
Here.
And Mayor Domingo.
Here, thank you. Mayors and councilmembers comments? There any council members comments this evening? Yes, Maurice?
Yes, I had asked that the Honeywell Discussion Paper be put into your packets. I wish to keep that alive and well. I know we had Phase One performed through August 2011 and July 2012. We're looking at Phase Two, and the information that I put in your packets was from Dick Williamson, the Honeywell presenter. I know that $2 million is quite a bit of money, but I would think if we're going to continue to use this building, that some council is sometimes going to have to take the big end, so we can have a future savings in the future. Also, if we don't go that route, and if we decide not to stay in this building, we should look toward rebuilding a new building with $2 million. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Andy?
Thank you, Mayor. I had the privilege this evening to attend the Mayor's Youth Council Meeting here, and I just wanted to report that we have a collection of very bright young people representing our city and the youth initiatives in this city, and I just wanted to commend them and to Harry Bonner and to our mayor for taking leadership in helping our young people learn about local government. So, thanks again for the invitation, Cheryl and Mayor. I really had a good time this evening.
Thank you for being there, Andy, and Cheryl, for your help. Are there any of the mayor youth coalition still here? If you would stand, please. One, that's not bad, but that's a good girl. Okay, if they're... Yes, I'm sorry, Lynn, didn't see you over the flowers.
Just like to make a report on Holland Park and say another thank you to the philanthropic women's group. We went and we presented to them last week, and we received so far $5,800 from them, which makes us now firekeepers 35,000, community foundation 20,000, philanthropic women 5,800, and we have the monies to complete the top part of the park, including the exercise walk, and we're moving on down to the middle. We have some money left over to start on the middle section now, so we'll be starting with the seniors and teens, and moving on down. So, got some money, want to send it our way, Holland Park. Thank you.
Great, sounds great. There's going to be a public hearing, but not until after the presentation that they're going to do first, so I'm going to go ahead and open it up. Peggy, if you would introduce... Help me. Why don't I have his name? Anyway, yes, if you would, and what we'll do... Nick? Hi, Nick. I just got his card. Okay, Peggy, go ahead.
I'm Peggy Szent, President of the Economic Development Corporation at 309 North Superior, and I'm here tonight to give you some introductory information prior to your public hearing and to introduce the project's architect and speak. First of all, just wanted to say, you've seen the creation of a district, you've approved the creation of a district, which will allow this project to go forward under the Oprah Act, and that basically means that the taxes will be frozen at last year's tax rate and for a period of 12 years, is what's being requested, and that will allow the project of the renovation of that building to cash flow, so that they can make it work, they can do the renovation that they want to do, they're talking about a historic renovation. And it's... The point of doing this kind of thing for any public body is to find ways to assist in the redevelopment of an area. In this particular case, of course, we're talking about the downtown, and one of the key things that has to happen is as downtown continues to grow and be rejuvenated, is that we need more people down there. We need people to spend money, to just be there and get some vibrancy in the downtown, and to draw their friends and colleagues downtown. And so, any building that is redeveloped and is financially viable and then can lease at affordable rates will help draw that target market downtown. So, it's really important that we try and support key projects to make sure that we have the spinoff from that. One of the other things that happens when you have a project like this is that, yes, we are giving some tax checks to this one, but it will also spur other activities. So, with all this foot traffic I talked about, we might see more retail, we might see more restaurants, other kinds of uses of the downtown, the first floors. Ultimately, we anticipate that there will be upstairs apartments created. I know that the ABA wants to do that with its building on Erie Street, and again, that brings more people downtown, and the taxes from some of those other properties will not be abated, and so there will be an increased tax flow to the city and to the various taxing jurisdictions, even though this particular project directly would not be increasing that tax flow immediately. So, with that brief introduction, first of all, do you have any questions for me? Probably not, you've heard me talk about this. Cheryl?
I did want to say one other thing as far as the tax flow goes. One of the other spinoffs of that is these projects will also employ people who will then pay city income taxes.
Of course, yep, yep, and it improves the appearance of downtown, it helps tax property values, improve all sorts of things like that. So, what I'd like to do is to introduce the person who really can give you a lot of detail about the project. His name is Nick Seehafer. He is the architect for this project, and he's working with a developer and has a PowerPoint to show you with some examples of work they've done elsewhere, and we'll give you some more information. Nick?
We're going to see how this technology thing works here, because I just noticed it turned off right before I came up here. Thank you, Peggy. Like she said, my name is Nick Seehafer. I'm an architect with Shaheen Development. We are at 1100 South Washington in Saginaw, Michigan. I just would like to kind of give you guys a brief company history and background on our company, and then show you some examples of some other projects that are very similar in scope to this project that we are proposing to do here in town. And then, I'd also like to just touch briefly on the actual project scope. Like Peggy said, Shaheen Development is a family-owned, community-based real estate company. We own and manage a little over a million square feet of residential, mixed-use, and commercial real estate in the Great Lakes Bay region. We've been at this for more than four decades. It was started by Dr. Samuel Shaheen Senior, and his two sons have taken over the company and are continuing on with this development. We do projects like office centers, state-of-the-art medical facilities, historic preservation of a very beautiful theater in downtown Saginaw, and also, we try to revitalize urban centers, riverfront properties, and landmarks. We're dedicated to upholding commitments to the communities we serve and to our long-established We act as a single-source responsibility for both delivery of projects and for financing. We utilize local labor and regional-based suppliers in order to keep costs down. We develop and redevelop historic sites. We very much are involved in our community up in Saginaw, and in Bay City and in Midland up there, which is the Great Lakes Bay region, and we like to give back to those communities, and we have a connection with Albion, and that's why we want to come back to Albion and help as well. And we strive to bring people back to the core of cities. We did it in Saginaw. We revitalized what we call the Washington Street District. It was... And I don't have that project up here, I don't know why I forgot that one, but that was mainly, it was run down residential houses, and now we've built up to, I think around five different medical office buildings, which has totally changed the character, and it's bringing the people back down into those areas. The project that we're proposing here today is 101 North Superior Street. We're all familiar with it. It's right outside, the two-tone gray and tan building and red on the back. The building was originally built in 1900. It was a commercial building at that time. It's a little over 10,000 square feet per floor, and right now, our budget for this renovation, we're projecting to be around $2 million. The scope of the work that we are looking at is a complete renovation of the exterior of the building. The brick needs to be, as I say, it needs to be uncovered. Right now, that battleship gray is just not very attractive, so we'd like to bring that back to its glory of that nice deep red brick that's evidence on the back of the building. We'd like to fix the stonework and actually fix the brick, because as you can see, many spots where I think brick have actually fallen off the building. We've already started the project, because we put a new roof on it already. We hired a company, we put new insulation and a brand-new roof on the top of the building. And we also had an abatement company come in, so that the building is now asbestos-free, is certified, and has all the testing. Like any project like this, in a 1900s building, it's had a lot of interior work done over the years, and most of the infrastructure is obsolete. So, part of the scope will be to strip out the electrical, the plumbing, the mechanical systems. Someone's kind of taken care of a lot of that for us already, and take all that out and build new. So, when we're done, we want this to be a historically renovated building, but we want it state-of-the-art on the inside. Currently, we have no signed-on tenants for this project, but what we are proposing is a mixed-use. We'd like to have some retail, and then the rest be actual professional office-type settings. Like I said, we were going to bring state-of-the-art office space and retail space back to downtown Albion, which right now is kind of lacking. We hope that the new, you know, all these new building occupants will bring even more people to downtown Albion and increase that foot traffic that Peggy was talking about, which will be a great benefit for everybody downtown. And we figure with 20,000 square feet, even on a light side, we could have up to 100 people in that building on any given day, and hopefully, they're bringing in even more people. Our project, we hope it will create new career opportunities for people in this community, like any new business. We do want to utilize local labor and construction companies. We've already started that. Both of the projects that we've taken on have both been from Hillsdale, which is just on the road. We do want this project to help revitalize this downtown. I mean, when you walk this downtown, everybody just drives through it, but if you actually stop and walk, like I've done several times, there's some very beautiful architecture down here, and it's a shame that it's just got boarded-up windows. So, we're hoping that this will be that first project that'll get people to want to come back down in here. Now, if I can get this to work, I'll give you a brief... Slow me down if I'm talking too fast.
The lights.
Is it on the side? The top? I have handles, just in case, because I was telling Peggy, I'm very unlucky when it comes to technology. We have... I have a couple of projects here that I'd like... That are good examples of our rejuvenation, is what we call it. The first one, this is Horizon Center. It is located in Saginaw, Michigan. It was constructed originally in 1964 as a Kmart. Shaheen Development purchased the building in 1994 and renovated it to house offices, and it has a conference center that you can go and rent for your functions. Currently, it's 130,000 square feet, and it is 100% occupied. We have a large portion of it taken up by Dow Chemical, so there's about 500 of their employees that on a daily basis go into this building. And then, on the other end, at the conference center, we actually have a daily restaurant that's open for those people, but also, you can book it and have a meeting, and they do the catering as well. You can tell, you can see the difference between the Kmart and today. This is the former interior of the Kmart store and what it looks like today. About 57,000 square feet of state-of-the-art offices, all office furniture, computer stations, and energy-efficient lighting and mechanical systems. And then, this is the actual conference portion of it. You can tell it's set up for a couple of different events there, but quite different from the old aisles of Kmart. The other project I wanted to bring to you guys is the Temple Theater. This is an absolute beautiful building. It was built in 1927. It, unfortunately, with new technologies coming out with, as they called them, the "speaking movies," where when it was originally opened, it was vaudeville acts and silent theater with actual music in there, and as technology changed, people stopped going to this building, and unfortunately, it just fell into total disrepair. Shaheen, Dr. Shaheen Senior purchased the building literally before the breaking ball hit it. He could not let such a beautiful piece of Saginaw be torn down for a parking lot. It's about 68,000 square feet. It has about 2,200 seats, and it is just an absolute beauty of a building. We spent about $9 million on the actual renovation. It has received several awards, and in 2010, the Shaheen family decided that they needed to turn the keys back over to the city, so they formed a organization, non-profit organization, and bequeathed the theater back to the actual community. So, now, it is... It's got a board that runs it, and they do fundraising and such to keep this building to... And it's... So that it'll never fall in disrepair again. On the left there, you can see, if you got the right angle, I should say, on the left, you can see there's actual scaffolding. The ceiling was all painted plaster with gold leaf, and you can see the gentleman, who was... Who spent many a months up on scaffolding, about 50 feet in the air, cleaning, repairing, and then repainting, because on the right, you can see that's what it looked like when we were done. Just a couple more shots here. This is a 1920s Barton organ. It was originally built in the building. They went through the process of having this thing put back into condition, and it works just like it did the day it was put in. And then, here's a picture of an actual performance. You can see the organ is the really light, right down there in the bottom left, and on any given week, this building is used by the community, at least four to five days, and it's even available for weddings. The last project I brought is, this is our current development in Bay City. It used to be a brown hoist site right along the river. As you can see, that was the buildings that were there before we got started. You can see in the background, you can actually see the city of Bay City's city hall in the background there. This was put up for a proposal to many different developers, and our group actually won it. We partnered with Dow Corning, Chemical Bank, McLaren Hospital, and it's a 43-acre total, totally new development, and this is just the first building that we have built, and is fully occupied by Dow Corning. It is a leased-back building, so that we actually paid for the construction, and then they just signed a very long lease. And that's a shot from the river. That is four floors, 105,000 square feet, and just to the right, you can see the second building, which is a mixed-use residential and retail building that I have about 50% occupied at this time. And that's all I have. Thank you. Any questions? I know I went through that pretty quick.
Looks like you got out of it pretty cheap.
Oh, it's like, wow, that's great. I must have really covered my bases today.
I guess.
Well, I thank you for your time for considering this for us.
And we thank you.
We very much love Albion and love to get this one project started. I'm sure others will follow as everybody else sees what a great opportunity downtown is. Thank you for your time.
And thank you. I'm going to put the students on next, and then we'll go to the public hearing, okay?
Yep. Let's do it.
Get things calmed down a little bit. Our next presentation's going to be by the Albion Community School Choir.
Mayor, if I may address the council. First of all, I would like to say thank you for the invitation. I think that for the first time, folks heard our kids and our own wonderful... Start again.
First of all, thank you for the invitation. We are very glad indeed to be invited. The first time the community heard our choir was at our own beautifully redone home theater, so we're very happy that you invited us back today. What I would like to say, everyone, is this is one of the many facets and the many things that are going on at Albion that we want the public to know. We are truly a phoenix, and we're very proud of it, and we'd like to say thank you to the community, and thank you to many of you sitting in your places, because you are making sure that we are going and growing. And I'd like to say thank you in advance to our wonderful director, Steve Hartman. He is our music teacher, and to my great kids. Thank you.
I'd like to introduce them. They are fifth and sixth grade, we call them the fifth and sixth grade choir. They're... The story is, they were actually band students that sang at a winter concert, and here we are, two or three performances later, so they really did a nice job, so we're really proud of them, but hoping... We're going to sing two pieces. The first one is called "One Nation," and the second one is an old Irish blessing, because something's happening tomorrow.
Thank you.
Maybe we're not the same color. Maybe we're not the same race. Maybe we don't have the same beliefs or live in the same kind of place. Maybe we think we're too different. Maybe that's simply not true. Maybe I also have hopes and dreams, and maybe I share them with you, share with you. We are one nation, yes, we are one land, together in freedom, united we stand. Oh, we are one nation, yes, we are one land, together in freedom, united we stand. Oh. We are a rainbow of people. We have our own history. We share a nation with common roots, a nation where people are free. We know that freedom is precious. We know the cost is extreme. We share commitments and prayers. We share our American dream, share our dream. We are one nation, yes, we are one land, together in freedom, united we stand. Oh, we are one nation, yes, we are one land, together in freedom, united we stand. Oh. We are one nation, yes, we are one land, together in freedom, united we stand. Oh, we are one nation, yes, we are one land, together in freedom, united we stand. Oh. We are, we are, we are one nation. We are, we are, we are one nation. We are, we are, we are one nation. One nation. One nation.
You are invited to come back to any council meeting that you want to.
Good luck with tryouts, everyone.
Thank you again, all of you. Super job. Okay, I'll go ahead with the public hearing now and I'll open it up. Public hearing is now open. City staff, if you have any presentations prepared, if any, the public shall offer any comments to the hearing so as long as they are not excessive in length. Are there any comments from the citizens this evening on the rehabilitation district? See none. I will close the hearing, open it up to the council. Any comments or anything that you have? See none from the council. Well, we walked right through that just about as good as they did, so no problem there. So, I like that. We will move on now that we have the choirs all done, the public hearing is done. We will move to redevelopment-ready community with Jenny. Is she here? Ah, she was ducking on me.
You're just gonna block that projection. I know. I mean, I think it really should go there.
And Mayor, if I might, while she's setting up, I would also like to introduce Rosalyn Jones from the Michigan ME-DC Economic Development Corporation. She's been very helpful with us as well as our own Economic Development Corporation in identifying resources and making sure that Albion is connected in many ways to better our community. So, thank you again, Rosalyn, for being here.
That's really small. Good evening. I'm Jennifer Ricktrank. I manage the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program at the Michigan Economic Development Corporation and was reached out to. I work with Rosalyn on communities across the state and this is a technical assistance program that we offer through community development at ME-DC. And so, just come tonight briefly, talk to you, see if the city has questions about possibly getting engaged in the program and brief overview and then maybe if you have questions. Redevelopment Ready Communities, I will refer to it as RRC. As many of you know, when you hear about Oprahs and other things with the state, we love our acronyms. The Redevelopment Ready Communities Program, really its purpose, it's a statewide certification program. We base it off of a set of best practices, which I'm gonna go through real briefly. We're certifying communities who have really built a solid foundation which to operate from when it comes to planning, zoning and development in your community. It's about embracing redevelopment strategies. It's about public engagement. It's about really being proactive in your approach versus reactive. Having that community support and buy-in on the front end instead of constantly being kinda in that fire drill mode where you're just reacting to things. These are our six best practices. Best practice one is community plans and public outreach. So, one, we're looking at your master plan. What's the vision for this community? And what are your redevelopment strategies? What's your downtown plan? Have you identified priority areas for redevelopment? We know within municipal boundaries, there's lots of areas that need assistance, but to be strategic and actually have a sustainable change, you need to prioritize and decide where you go first. Those are hard decisions, but once you start in an area and you start to see change, let the market pick it up, then you go to your next area. In public outreach, citizen participation, that public input, how are you engaging stakeholders? How are you making sure certain stakeholder groups are at the table or that haven't participated in the past? What kind of techniques or where you hold your meetings or your workshops to get that participation? And putting that down in a plan, a lot of things we talk about in our different best practices about internal documenting, that you're doing good things, but what if somebody leaves? Officials, elections come and go, officials change, staff changes, they retire, they take other jobs. How do you have that, what you're doing well, kinda ingrained that it keeps doing well after that person leaves, that that process is, keeps continuing? Best practice two, zoning. You may have the best master plan in the world, but if you don't have the zoning regulations to require or regulate the types of developments to fulfill that vision, it doesn't really matter how great your, your master plan is. So, we look at zoning, especially your downtown and do you allow mixed use and how flexible is your zoning? You look at your development review process. Again, do you do joint site plan reviews? So, all the different reviewing bodies get it at the same time? They are reviewing it under the same expectations, the same time period so that you have a timely process. We're not gonna tell you, you should be doing that review in a certain amount of time. How long does it take you to do? And then you put that expectation out there that it takes this long and you tweak it. If you run into instances where you're not hitting on a continual basis, you're not hitting your timeframes, change them. And so, there's that predictability when it comes from the private sector. Best practice four deals with recruitment and education, so that's training for your elected and appointed officials as well as staff. How are you sharing up the information? Because we know bodies, the whole council cannot go to something, but if one person does, how do you come back and share that information? I was, nice to see on your agenda tonight, you have your annual planning commission report out so that you're on top of and you're hearing what's going on, the planning commission. Hopefully, you're celebrating successes, but you're also identifying where there may be hiccups in a process and how can you work further in the, on the future. I should've started this by saying, I have not reviewed any of Albion's planning, zoning documents or anything, so when I'm talking, I'm talking in generalities right now, not specific to what your community is already doing. A best practice five deals with redevelopment sites. How are you identifying the redevelopment opportunities and then how are you packaging those and proactively marketing them? You can wait and hope that a broker or a property owner looks at marketing or you can offer to assist with that marketing. And then you have, we, we work with developers who say, you know, it's like throwing a dart at a dartboard, you're just trying to see what's gonna stick. Instead, they'd like to see what you'd like to see there and we're not talking, you know, as specific as a bike shop on this corner, but generally, what is the vision for this area? They wanna know there's some community input and there's some buy-in upfront so that when they do come forward with a proposal, there's not all the reactionary comment because those people have already been involved. You've already had that stakeholder input on the front end and now the project coming forward is helping to fulfill that goal or that strategy. And then best practice six deals with economic development and marketing. What's the economic development strategy? How does it tie into the larger region? And then how are you marketing all the different opportunities, whether they are around travel and tourism, whether they're around business, whether they're around your development sites? All that tying together. We've actually developed a subject-specific, a subject-manner-specific best practice, our waterfront for waterfront communities. These are additional things that communities, if you're a waterfront community, should be thinking about as well. You have that great asset. And then we're in the process of working through a broadband in technology. With energy, we're looking at renewable energy and also energy efficiency. We are working with prima civitas and the treasurer's office, the state treasurer office on fiscal health for communities around budgeting, what are some things to be thinking about so long-term? You're doing all you can to be fiscally responsible. And then resiliency. So, when it comes to be a resilient community, avoiding disasters, how are you looking at your emergency management? So, when there is an emergency, you are prepared to react to that. Communities that are involved in the program, we do an evaluation. We take our, we take our, excuse, this is my copy that is written all over, but we take our best practices. This information's online if you haven't received a copy of this yet, but we have our requirements. And then we have expectations. The expectations are what we're measuring a community to, to see if you're fulfilling that requirement. There is some flexibility. We look to the community to demonstrate to us how they're actually feeling, fulfilling that requirement, but then we have the report out set up in a scorecard manner so that green, you're fulfilling it. Yellow, there's a little work or something needs to be tweaked. Red, a system, a procedure, a plan, something is missing and needs to be developed. So, there is some text, but we know you're very busy, you don't have a lot of time to read lengthy reports and so we use the coloring to show. Quick case study, we have three certified communities under the program currently. The city of Alleghan was one of our first certified and going through this process, one thing that the city didn't have was a capital improvements plan, which is required by law under the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act. And so, walking through, if they weren't going through the program, they probably would still not be in compliance with this, but we helped walk them through how to put a capital, a CIP together and you see all the benefits. I'm not gonna read that to you. Another case study is the city of East Point is another one of our certified communities and we helped them to see, it was so hard to find information on their website. If you think about, you spend a lot of time in this state trying to attract business from across the nation and across the world and not everyone's operating in the same business hours. And so, access to that information, even a developer or a development company in, in this area, even a citizen, they work all day. When they get home, they need to be able to get on your website and find information. Maybe they wanna put a porch, a shed. So, while we talk about streamlining and transparency for developers and businesses, this is your average citizen who needs to work through your, your processes and your permitting applications, thing like that. This is our advisory council that we bounce and work with whenever we, when we originally established these best practices, as we look at updating them, the different parameters of our program. You can see there's a variety of local government, county government, we have some regional entities, some other state entities, statewide organizations such as the Michigan Municipal League, the Michigan Association of Planning, a handful of developers. And so, we're trying to look at all the different aspects of when it comes to community and economic development and get their say. They're the ones out there pounding the pavement, doing this work, whether it's on the local government side or it's on the private sector. If the city of Albion was interested in formally engaging in the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program, the next steps would really be, we have a set of self-assessments on our website, one for each best practice where you can already assess where you're at. Yes, you're doing it? No, you're not. No, you're not is not a big deal, it's just you've identified something to work on. Adoption of a resolution by this body of your intent with the program. Why do you wanna get involved and what are you hoping for the outcome? The reason we do it this way now, we held two open application rounds the two previous years and, and communities did apply to an application that were scored and a lot of times it was one person filling out that application, one person that saw value in the program, but one person cannot take this on. Staff, there's things staff would be possibly required to do. There may be things that come to the planning commission or to this governing body for changes and so everyone has to be bought in and see the value in the program. I really like to say that RRC, we're really helping communities help themselves. When it comes to the things we're talking about, this is not new. These are things that you should already be doing to have a competitive edge. When it comes to development sites and your redevelopment opportunities, in a training that I do with best practice five, we go around and talk to all the different communities that make a list of their top three opportunity sites and their top three challenging sites. We go around and talk about them. What do we hear? We hear a lot of the same opportunities, a lot of the same challenges. So, how, when a developer has a project, how do you get them to come to your municipality when they can go to neighboring or somewhere in the region that has sites just like yours? So, how do you sell yourself? A lot of that comes to a streamlined, transparent process and the predictability. We have engaged in the best practice training series. I have a checkmark on that, Peggy has attended our best practice training series. We hold those periodically. Those are free to a community that's formally engaged and so that would be for staff, any of your boards and commissions that would wanna get involved would be more than happy to come and engage in those best practice trainings. We just do a deeper dive into each of the criteria and what's expected and we give examples and samples of how it's being done successfully in other places. This is a map which is so difficult for you to see, but this really shows we have communities of different sizes, large and small, speckling across the state. We do have a little bit of a concentration down in Region 10 in southeast Michigan. This program originally came out of the Michigan Suburbs Alliance and was available to communities only in their region or in their membership area. And so, when we actively took over this program, we grandfathered in, working with some of those communities that had been part of the previous program. They didn't have to apply, they didn't have to fill out the self-evaluations. They do have to do everything else that any other community does to, to achieve the certification. Any questions?
Another one that got off real easy.
Well, I guess it's the question and I'm afraid I'd miss it, but once you're fully certified, beyond, I guess, the benefits of just having developers who are more willing to develop in your community, are there other forms of assistance or support?
Yes, so there are some, I guess, perks to being certified. Through, through the requirements in best practice five, you're required to package one site to our standard. We will help you market up to three sites through our state, our different state sources, which includes online. We go to private sector events and we do active marketing there. We do some assistance with some design around a marketing piece. Certified communities do, are a priority for funding at ME-DC and at MISTDA. We also have some technical assistance. So, after a community's been evaluated, we can work to identify what are some of the greatest needs that we can assist you in moving forward in certification. So, we have assisted with zoning updates. We have assisted with development feasibility studies. So, it's great to have a site, but having some data to put behind why and what you'd like to see there and then having somebody say what the feasibility of this really, you know, truly happening. We've been working with Peter Allen from the University of Michigan and a group of multidisciplinary students for the last two years on feasibility sites. We've completed, I believe, 15 and have a new round this, this summer that's going. That technical assistance, that can be, you know, I, I spoke to the zoning, we're doing a branding exercise with a community. We are helping to assist with a website update. We are doing some pointed training and not just for, say, a city, but some surrounding municipalities so that they are working more hand-in-hand together for the region. It really depends on what the community needs. You get, I mean, you already get some great attention from, from Rosalyn, but our certified communities are definitely a priority for community assistance as well. Yes?
How does this interface with what we already have as far as an EDC? You know, a lot of what you're saying you do, I'm sure we're already doing at some...
Well, what, what we are doing is really a third-party audit. So, we're gonna look at what you are doing and what you say you want to be doing, what you are doing, are you achieving the results? You could be, I think we're gonna start seeing when we go to evaluate a community, a lot more greens because communities are being proactive in this area and moving themselves forward and we're just gonna give you some recommendations. So, it's, we're not gonna come in and, and take over to do anything like that. We're just gonna kinda audit what you're doing and then give some feedback. And then there's another kinda checking point of, you know, a resolution of you wanna continue to work towards certification. It's a totally voluntary program. There's no cost to the community except the time of, you know, having, getting the information, getting questions answered, things like that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Our planning commission is in the process of undertaking the comprehensive plan. Our planning commission is in the process of undertaking the comprehensive plan. How would this best tie in? How would our best tie in with that process?
So I think having an understanding of what we're going to look at your master plan for, we're definitely going to be looking at redevelopment strategies. That could be within your master plan. It could be a separate strategy or plan on its own. But looking at the expectations and the best practices already and making sure you are already doing those or have those elements within your plan. Any of, any plans or strategies, we're always looking for, what's the goal and objectives? What are the actual steps to implementation? We want to see that there's some actions identified, some accountability, who or what body or group is identified to being charged with making this happen? And then that there's some kind of timeframe or check-in points of, are we headed in the right direction? Are we doing what we want to do or do we need to stop and reassess? So really with any plan, we're looking that there's accountability, implementation, and a timeframe.
Any further questions? And we thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Our next presentation will be an annual report from George Strander, the Planning Commission Chair.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's George Strander. I'm here to represent the Planning Commission. But before I get into a discussion of our annual report, I want to make a shameless plug for Albion Youth Theater. We are hosting Missoula's, Missoula Children's Theater this week. And dozens of, of kids from the Albion area will be involved in Rapunzel, which will be performed two times on Saturday at 3:00 and 5:30 over at the Albion Schools Auditorium. And I hope that everyone can come and see the kids put on Rapunzel. I don't think anyone on the Planning Commission knew we were supposed to give an annual report until our last meeting. So I, I thank Cheryl for letting us know that we're actually supposed to be doing this. I want to mention, we have several members of the commission here, the mayor, Garrett, Maurice was on before, Wes, I saw John, yeah, I don't know if I'm missing anyone else. We have a lot of the members here. I'm not going to read everything, so it'll be a little shorter, but I do want to mention a few things. On the front page, it mentions a little bit about what our powers and functions are. Over the years, on the Planning Commission, two of the things that we've dealt with a lot are the review of special use permits, which are special uses which are allowed under the zoning ordinances. And we assess whether those are appropriate and the special use should be granted. And also site plan reviews. So when someone wants to develop a piece of property or do something with some existing structure, many times the planning commission has been involved in those site plan reviews. As I've mentioned, we are supposed to give this a report by the first day of April, so we made it. There's a discussion on the second page of the purpose of the Planning Commission. And a lot of this has to do with how our community is developed physically and how specific projects are assessed. So it talks about guiding the physical development, adopting plans, including the comprehensive plan, which we'll talk about a little bit in a second. And also case-by-case reviews to make sure that it complies with what we think the zoning ordinances and the comprehensive plan have in store for the community. The next part goes over the master plan. And we do have a requirement to develop a master plan, which will talk about not only where the community has come from, where the community is now, but where we want the community to go and how we want to develop the community. This is not the first, the one we're dealing with right now is not the first comprehensive plan, of course, that Albion has put into place. We did one in 1964, I believe, and then we did one in 1990. We did one in 2000. And now we've been working on a revision of the comprehensive plan for several years. Way back when, when we had more money and we had consultants, it was a little easier. People would come in and they would develop things and bring it back to the body. Now it's completely volunteer. And so it goes a little slower, but we've been working on it for the last few years, actually been working on a redevelopment of the existing plan. But most recently, we've gotten to review some of the, the goals and ideas that you just heard about and look at a different concept for a comprehensive plan. So it appears as if we might be going in that direction, develop something which was more value and goal-oriented and also, and I can't echo enough what, I'm sorry, your name is, Jennifer, what Jennifer said. The last thing we want is to develop a piece of paper or a document that goes and sits on a shelf and then no one looks at it ever again. Okay? We, I mean, it's nice to go and look at words and say, oh, these are nice, you know, goals, but it makes a lot of sense to develop concrete ideas on how we can go from A to B. Not just who's going to do it, but where are we going to get the money and everything in between. So hopefully we can do something like that. There's a little overview of what we've done in 2014. We didn't have a meeting every month in 2014. We did deal with some rezoning issues, special use permit. We did have a presentation from the Food Hub, which I'm sure you've had a presentation on as well. And most recently, in 2015, we've been dealing with a review of the comprehensive plan. We do have a comprehensive plan committee and we've met, we've, we're going to continue to meet and come back to the full commission with a suggestion. And then eventually, of course, it would come, come to this body. So with that, I'll open up for any questions, if you have any. You're going to let me get off easy like everyone else?
That's what it's looking like.
All right.
I thank you, George.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, George.
Dee is going to be canceled this evening due to an illness in her family. So Krista, Krista won't be here. So we'll move on to the citizens' comments. A person addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than five minutes and two agenda items only. Property form is required. Other than any citizens' comments on the agendas this evening. See none? We'll go to the consent calendar. We'll vote on all three of them at once. Approval of study session minutes, February 24th. Approval of council session minutes, March 2nd. And approval of the study session minutes for March 3rd.
So moved?
Support.
Moved and supported. Are there any questions on any of the three? Yes, Andy?
There, on page four of the goal-setting sessions, March 3rd. In the call to future agenda items, I believe, on page four at the top, under G-City, Council Member French would like to have discussions regarding the two dams, is misspelled?
Yes, I saw that.
There's no M-N in the word dam, referring to a device that stops water. So if you could just make that correction, that'd be great.
Damn.
Other than that, I, fine.
If there are no more on any of the three, we'll have a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. All three pass. Thank you very much. Items for individual discussion. A, request approval of Resolution 2015-14, obsolete property rehabilitation examination examining certificate for the Albion LLC for property located at 101 North Superior.
So moved.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Are there any questions? Yes, Cheryl?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. My husband and I, before we moved to Albion, spent eight years living in the thumb of Michigan and are very familiar with Bay City and Saginaw. And I, out of curiosity, this weekend, we were on our way up to the U.P. instead of going to Florida. Anyway, that was a, that was a comment that, anyway, this brownfield redevelopment, the one, the 43-acre brownfield redevelopment that Nick was talking about in Uptown Bay City, I was very curious about that because I remember when, it was still the brownfield and I remember when it looked like this. And I knew that this had been redeveloped by the same developer who was looking at the city of Albion. And so, of course, I had to go take a look because I'm kind of nosey that way. And I will tell you, it is amazing what they have done. And not only is it amazing what the new developments that they have done are, but what is really amazing is all the things that have popped up around there. Bay City is becoming a different city. And I know that the same thing has been done with Saginaw, the area of Saginaw that was redeveloped. I did not get a chance to go look at that, but I will. And if we can even get one-tenth of this in the city of Albion, we're going to be much better off for it.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, we'll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo?
Yes.
B, discussion of the Albion Housing Liaison's position.
That's my item. I wanted to give the Albion Housing Authority a chance to make their comments how they feel concerning moving with or without going forward with Albion Housing Liaison position. I would like to state my position. The liaison position was created by the mayor. The mayor, our former city manager myself, thought we would extend an olive branch to the housing. The housing, I had been nominated by the mayor. We held off bringing it to council for appointment because Housing Authority had a opinion that it would best that locally elected officials not serve because of possibly some type of conflict of interest could arise. So we created the position and I took it. I served and after serving, I recognized it was really no governing authority, no voting power, couldn't attend executive sessions. It was really just being a citizen attending an Open Meetings Act meeting. Cutting through the chase, I feel our attorney had done research concerning the HUD opinion. It has, you know, no legal basis, it's just their opinion. I think locally elected officials should have the same rights and privileges as prescribed by law to serve in their community as city board members, as all citizens qualify to have and to hold. There's no legal prohibition to a locally elected official serving and sitting on a city of Albion public boards. I'll state it again, the HUD, the Housing and Urban Development, has a recommendation in case of a conflict of interest that no LEOs sit on the housing boards. Historically, Albion has always had a LEO sit on the board, from the mayor's seat to councils. It's not really a Maurice Barnes issue. I talked with Mr. Hawkins. He was with the housing for about 13 years. He explained to me some situations the housing had with Mr. Snyder. Mr. Snyder was fired and then the mayor came in and removed all the board members. So it's, it's not an issue of Maurice Barnes. I'm not being subjective with this at all. I just felt that when we're dealing with public service, everyone should have a fair chance. And that's just my take on it. I learned a lot while I was there. Jim Rennett was, was a pretty good president. I think that he could have stepped up more to, to chair the meetings. And I'm not going to go any further than that and say, I think it should be disbanded, the liaison position, and we should be treated with the same rights as every other citizens.
Thank you. Any further comments from council? Yes, Andy?
So it is in our authority to, to request for updates to the council on a, as regular basis as we...
I would assume that you'd be okay with that? Yes, Maurice?
Oh, yes, all that's by charter. And we, we, they're supposed to submit minutes in a timely fashion as all the other boards and a charter for us to ax that the packet that the board members receive continue.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just offer a comment in regards to that. It's my understanding we are now receiving the, the minutes and the agendas as part of the packets for the Housing Commission. And they were also made aware that the council has asked for the quarterly updates. And I believe the next one's scheduled for April 6th, so that is already in the works.
Thank you.
Cheryl?
I'm, I guess I'm a little bit confused. You said that we don't necessarily have to have a liaison. If there is an issue, do they bring it directly to the entire council? Do they bring it to the mayor? How exactly, if, if there's a problem, how does, where does that go? If we have no liaison?
Colin, I guess it's time for you to speak.
I think it, it really depends on, on what specific issue you're referencing. I mean, I mean, they're governed by statute, so they inherently have a certain amount of power themselves. Now, I mean, if it's, you're talking about a financial issue or some things of that nature, those are things that would need to eventually come to council because arguably that kind of filters up, up the stream to the city. But aside from that, I mean, they're somewhat of a self-governing body, so...
That's what I wanted to know.
Yes, Maurice?
In essence, financially, they're self-governing through HUD. We are the statute that keeps them in place. We're the jurisdiction that makes them possible. The research that I've done, I've contacted Washington DC. I will be receiving some answers on some financials shortly. I've already informed city manager of the steps that I've taken, contact Washington DC and the federal authorities concerning some of the things that I, I felt that I didn't receive answers from, that I'm still waiting through the city manager's chair to receive those answers. I'm not saying they're doing anything wrong by a long shot. I'm just saying some policy and procedure questions that are just elementary should be answered to council. And that's that for me.
Okay. I think there was a notice sent out to everybody that has a board or commission meeting. They are to bring or send their minutes back to the city clerk. That's something that hasn't been done in the, the recent past. It's going to get started now. We're going to find out, you know, with their minutes and things like that, that what's, what's going on. Some of these things are very touchy issues. Back in the day when, when the housing developments were started and stuff, they were piggybacked with the city for, not city funds, but I think for funds coming from the state and things like that, they had to have the cities okay and things like that to do. And I think as time has gone by, I think HUD and people like that have turned those back over to the power of the maintenance people that are there and not so much the city. I think we used to use each other for help with getting funds to develop and, and help them grow. And I think we've kind of got out of that pretty much. So I'm not sure. I guess we'll wait for what word that you have on this coming. I don't know what it is. I don't know, is it coming to you or is it coming to Maurice personally?
Well, if he made the inquiry, I would assume that some of that information may go directly to Councilmember Barnes.
Okay.
Already been in touch with manager at the Housing Commission in regards to gathering some information as well.
So I guess, you know, when we get down to further, our future agenda items, we can put this back on to take it to a vote, to do, yes, I'm sorry, Colin?
I was just going to just offer to the council, I mean, I know there's been a lot of questions about... of questions about what, what level of involvement they're supposed to be, just so the council's aware, the, the state statute for housing commissions allows the council to pass certain resolutions that require, you know, if, if it's, if the council's looking for more, I guess I'll say oversight, like, for example, you can pass a resolution that would say before the commission can enter into an agreement for a public or private grant source to help fund them, it would have to have council approval and things like that. So, I mean, just be aware that those, those are things that you can do if that's a...
Right.
...an avenue you want to explore.
Unfortunately, I guess one of those things, when you come to the housing projects like that, are the people that live there have nobody to go to but the people that are in charge, the boards. And if they can't see eye to eye, where do they go from that point? And I think, you know, I've had several people call me and my hands are kind of tied when it comes to, you know, sections aides and, and those kinds of things. I'll do what I can, but like I said, being under the control of HUD, our hands are tied with their rules and regulations without getting into that. But I think that's what it used to be. So, we can look into it further if we need to. If not, we can put it on for further agenda items and we can vote on going away with the liaison's position and what position that we would like them to take as far as sending or, you know, coming to us like our planning and everybody else is supposed to do with reports. So, if there is no more, we'll move on. Thank you. C is the discussion request, approval of resolution twenty fifteen dash sixteen, the Albion Department of Public Safety FEMA fire safety grant application. So, moved. Support? Moved and supported. And Cheryl, somebody needs to...
Well, if you have questions, I'll ask you to direct them to Scott, Chief Scott Kip. But in general, this is a no-match grant from FEMA, which would allow us to hire two firefighters for twenty-four months under their Staffing for Adequate Fire and Safe, Fire and Emergency Response Call Their Safer Program. And the total amount of the grant request is two hundred and forty thousand three hundred and seventy dollars. And that includes salary and benefits for those two positions.
My only question is, is I thought we were public safety.
Yeah, that's what's my question.
I'm questioned on this and you know that was going to come, so I don't even know why anybody would answer.
Back in the early, or late nineties, early two thousands, we hired police officers under cops grants. We made them firefighters. It's the same intent here. I have planned on hiring firefighters and make them police officers. So, we'd be public sa, they'd be public safety officers, not just firefighters. So, that's how the grant reads.
Sweet.
The grant, the grant reads they can do both?
No. The grant reads that we're a public safety department and they would do both.
Okay. I only read fire, so...
Right, well, i- it's for fire, but I mean, the cops grants were for police officers. We made them firefighters. This is for firefighters, we make them police officers. We do both jobs, so they'd be doing both jobs.
So, we're going to go from nineteen to twenty-one?
Eighteen to twenty.
Okay. And we can do this for twenty-four months?
Correct.
And if you hire them and they're not qualified, you're going to have to send them to school?
That'll be the requirement that they're, they're qualified in both when they get hired for this grant.
So, they have to have that training?
They have to have both for this.
Okay. So, they'll go through a probationary period?
Yep.
Of training with our officers?
Correct.
And then they're good for two years?
Correct. Well, they're good for two years from date of hire, so.
Okay.
Five months of training and then...
After two years, we have to make a decision whether we can afford to keep them or hopefully somebody retires?
Correct.
And they can move into that position. Okay, Cheryl?
I was just going to say, you, you have some officers that are getting close to retirement age now, am I right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Further questions?
So, the, the individuals you select, they would have already had to have completed the academy and all that?
For this grant, yes, otherwise it wouldn't be worth our time trying to send somebody to, we'd have to hire a, if we didn't hire, I mean, if we have to hire a firefighter and the cost of sending a firefighter to the police camp would be way more expensive with the grant's worth.
Okay. If there is no further, thank you, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Crowe?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Domingo?
Yes, thank you. D, discussion of approval of criminal background check policy?
So, moved.
Cheryl?
Support.
Moved and supported, questions?
Discussion.
Mayor and council, as you are aware, when I first came on board just six months ago, there was a, a hiring practice relative to the background checking, criminal background checks for both employees and part-time people and commission members and volunteers. But it wasn't documented in terms of an actual policy. So, what we did was actually put a policy in place so that it's consistent and it's fair and it's applied across the board.
Yes, Maurice?
I don't think it's fair. I have felonies myself and reading this, there's no opportunity for rehabilitation. There's, there's no opportunity for a new start. I see double jeopardy, I see it being hypocritical, presidential. I mean, I'm a city, I'm a city councilman and this is contrary to law concerning the boards and commissions. This is all bunched together. I would like to see it categorized out. For me to be eligible to be a councilman, my felony would have to have been over ten years ago. It was probably fifteen, eighteen years ago. And that's, I had to wait that long to run. I won the initial election and I was re-elected. I served on several organizations in the town and I was on several boards. I think that people are afforded a second chance. I think that many people have made mistakes and the criminal justice system itself has been shown to be corrupt in some arrests and convictions. I'm not saying that's across the board, but we, you know, we do have organizations now that are representing people who are wrongly convicted. So, we have some who come out with decisions where they took the cop so they wouldn't get a life sentence and they were not guilty. I'm not saying that across the board. In our recreation department, I've been there a complete year. A lot of fathers are not able to coach their kids because of some of these misdemeanors and aggravated assault is a high misdemeanor. That's not a felony and this is saying it's a felony they wouldn't be able to coach. I mean, we got Boy Scout leaders who had clear records. They were able to be in Boy Scouts and we get on the news where they committed criminal sexual assaults against the kids in the woods. Got priests who are representing God. I think we should be a little more fair in this. If I can serve as a city councilman by law and my felony is over ten years old, we should give people a chance. This is very strong language and this is alienating some of the very people you're asking to vote for a millage. I think we'd have been more intelligent to hold this off until you did do a recreation millage. Because this sends the wrong message to the, the children's fathers and the, and the mothers who have been in the criminal justice system. The criminal justice system about rehabilitation. I'm not a perfect citizen sitting here right now, but I've come a long way from where I used to be.
Yes, Carol?
When, when I read it, the way I understood it was saying is that if you have violent felonies and, you know, sexual crimes, and those would just permanently bar you from dealing with children or, or working in certain areas. And then the other parts were if you, let's say you had committed, let's say you had embezzled or something, you could, we wouldn't hire you as the finance director or something like that, you know? So, and then the, to me, I guess it, it made sense because there's, there is a cutoff with, with some of the other offenses, but the, like, if, you know, there's like a, a violent assault or rape, I, I think that, I, I don't know if you should be, you know, put in a place dealing with kids or, or those kinds of things. So, I, I thought it was reasonable.
Yes.
I, I recognize, I wouldn't want anyone working with my child either with a sexual situation. Mine was violence and drugs. I've never hurt a kid. I've been, I was, ran the Police Athletic League in Grand Rapids for nine years. I've always worked with children. But I think in a situation of sexual violence, no, I, I could go along with that. But in other situations, less than murder, I think a person should be able, given a chance to work with the children. They could be monitored, but this here is just cut and dry caveman thinking to me. We, we, we're talking about being a progressive city and we're going to alienate people and we, but we want these same people to vote for this millage. Well, can I finish, please? I, I, I think that, you know, we're being unfair and I'm not taking it personally. I don't mind not being able to coach the kids. I'm sixty years old. But for the people who are coming home to work with their children, they have a future. And for me not to be able to sit on another city board, that's contrary to law. That's, that's, it's bunched in here, boards and commissions. Are you going to kick me off council because I got a felony? You can't do that. It's contrary to law. I have to leave, so I got, I got, I already told the city clerk I had to go, so my vote is no.
Before, you wouldn't have been hired at all. Now, they're trying to give some defense to some of these to give time back, so we cut time short. Don't make it, don't make it sit here and sound like anybody's being punished.
That's not how I'm reading it. I'm reading, I'm reading as...
Well, I know that's not how you're reading it because you're on the other side of the fence trying to read it your way.
No, I'm on, I'm on this side of the fence. I'm seating him here as an elected...
And are you asking to be excused because you have to leave?
I've already done that with her. But anyway, the bottom line is this says no felonies, period, under certain clauses, none. That's not what it says?
Within ten years?
Yes. Cheryl?
One of the, one of the things that, one of the things that does not concern me is the fact that if we do this, it, and all of this is, is covered and written liability-wise, if something should happen as city, we will be covered liability-wise because we did, and I think, I think it's due diligence, isn't it? We went and we went and put it where we needed to. We did the screening. It was an approved screening. I mean, and we're not going to use a screener that doesn't know what they're doing. I, I, I understand where Councilman Barnes is coming from. I understand all of that. However, I also understand that as a city, we need to put something in place so that if something does happen, we are not held liable.
I agree.
Yes, Carol?
There, there are just two reasons, I mean, a couple of reasons, more than two, actually. But one of the things, and this is kind of like a upper level thing about this, is I think for a while, the city has not documented policies, okay? And so, that, and that's why I really enjoyed the presentation, the MDC, MDC presenter about that, is that how important that is. And so, I think that first thing, this is a good thing that we're discussing and, and it's coming to council. And I think the other thing is, like Councilmember Crowe said, is that it, it protects the city and that it actually prevents what, as the mayor said, had been going on, which is just a, a flat, you know, you're, you know, you're pulled out of the pool. So, at least there is a, there's a time limit. I mean, like I said, certain, certain offenses, you know, if I've embezzled, I shouldn't be running the, the financial department. If I've committed sexual crimes, I shouldn't be dealing with children. So, I mean, those are just, those just make absolute sense. And I think that to have a limit on it makes sense, so, yeah. And this, and the last thing, this does nothing to council because that's a charter thing, you know? So, thank you.
Colin?
Just one small correction. This is, this is just a error on my part in, in under felonies, first paragraph, second line, where it reads aggravated assault, that should actually read felonious assault.
Okay, what's that again?
I got it.
Yes.
My question is, so we're saying all felony violence, regardless of the time since offense, that excludes you, right? As I read it, under felonies, all felony violence, regardless of the time since offense, that excludes you from being on a city board and commission, as it's written. May I be excused? I have to leave.
It was my interpretation that is if it's more than ten years.
Well, to me, it reads all felony violence, regardless of the time since offense.
Okay, it does.
My vote, you know, I have to leave.
The way that it's worded is all violent felonies, regardless of when they occur, would preclude you from serving, but all other felonies that are not violent felonies, i.e.
Just ten years.
CSC, assaultive, kidnapping, robbery, things involving weapons. If it's something outside of that, like felony embezzlement, felony drug charge, things like that, those would just have a ten years.
Well, so...
Yes, Carol?
So, so in that case, what you're saying is that, so if I, in nineteen eighty-four, I embezzled something, so ten years after that, I'd be eligible for that, but if I got into...
Kidnapped somebody in eighty-four, you would not be eligible.
Okay. Okay.
Do you have a question, Lauren?
Yeah, I have a question. I have something to say because I, I had been mailing back and forth, forth with the city manager on this because, I don't know, I, I explained to her the way I felt about it was just somewhat, some of what Maurice said, not all. But there's a lot of young black males that have dealt with drugs and things before like that and have had charges against them who still cannot get a job, you know, because of that. And it's been years and years ago. And that, that was something that really bothered me because if a person can't get a job, then they're going to do something illegal to make a living. And if you want to rehabilitate them or you want to get them out of that, where they can have a life, you know, sometimes things are so punitive until it's not so. But I understand that there's some parts in here, like the children and things like that, that, you know, she's left as is. But I'm, I'm just hoping that... Here in Albion, there's not many jobs. There's, and, and, and so if a person is applying for one, it, it's, it's less jobs than it is problems to get into. There's a lot of that, but less jobs. And so, I just, I just would not wanted to see it to a point to where a person would just be limitless of, of getting a job here because of something they maybe did when they were seventeen, eighteen years old like this.
Well, let me offer this because I definitely hear that people should be given an opportunity to have a second chance because they do make mistakes sometimes when they were younger or whatever the circumstances may have been. So, what I can do is go back and work with our council, see if we can find some language that at least allows an opportunity for an appeal process so that if, within a shorter period of time, if they have demonstrated that they are an asset to the community, such as letters of recommendation from the community, that they can be given additional consideration instead of just cutting it at a particular year point for those special circumstances.
Okay.
I can live with that.
Yeah, thank you.
Taken, I think we have discussion. I don't think we're going to approve that tonight.
And I have one more comment.
I'm sorry, Cheryl?
It's all right. I have one more comment. Before we make any of those decisions, as far as, can we check with some other communities and see what, what they're doing? I, I also understand about young people and, you know, having made mistakes when you're young and that type of thing. But I, I'm also concerned about the liability of the city if something happens. If we should decide that, you know, we do the appeal and we go through the appeal process, that's one thing. And then come up with, okay, maybe we can give them a chance. But if we just decide that we're going to change some of this and then we don't have an appeal process, I, I think that's going to put us in a real liable situation if something should happen. So, I, 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 I can't go along with just changing it unless we've got some other vehicle that we can, that we can check that out and, and maybe go through some type of appeal process.
Carol?
Just to, embezzlement's the thing for me tonight. So, one of the thing, and I, and, and Colin can let me know if this is correct, but if I remember correctly, we've had conversations where is there a provision in the charter about, there are some like prohibitions on hiring people who may have committed crimes that are related to job functions? So...
If I recall, it has to do with, it, it, I want to say something, the language is something along the lines of crimes of moral perpetuity or something like that. Basically, something that involves theft or dishonesty was, was an issue with hiring. And then I believe there's a provision as it relates to the council... And then I believe there's a provision as it relates to the council, certainly on the council, that has to do, it's crimes of like public, basically, that would, that would call into question your trustworthiness with the public, something to, to that effect.
Okay.
If there is no further, we discussed it. Yes?
Do we need a motion to table until?
Uh, I think because we had the motion in the second when we went in.
I'll just, I'll table it just for, you know, more work to be done.
Do you want to table or do you wanna bring it back and say, may?
But what's the timetable?
There's no particular timetable. Um, we could probably do as early as the second meeting in April.
Okay.
That's fine.
Well, like I said, I think, you know, you added some good things there. I guess if, if they come highly recommended by, you know, just things like that.
Councilman Reed suggested that, that we add to this proposal that if they're highly recommended by her, then that would be sufficient.
So, okay.
Mayor, if I could ask if there are any council members who have some specific language you would like to see included or excluded or not touched, if you could also let me know. So, as we move forward, we can incorporate that.
Yes?
I think the only thing I would say is, is maybe if, if the offense is like, like immediately relevant to what the role is, right? So, like, you know, the kids, you can't have sexual crimes. If it's money, you can't have financial crimes. And then maybe for some of the lesser things, just that blanket, you know, period of time. But I think for me, it's really just like tying, like the offense of the job category.
Right.
That kind of thing.
Yeah. The priorities are really twofold, to make certain that we are protecting the children in particular, who are in our care for the recreation programs in particular, and to make sure that we are protecting the city in terms of liability.
Yeah.
Correct. Andy?
Right. I just wanna emphasize that again. I think really, an employee of the city represents the city, whether they're working the eight-hour shift or not. So, I think it's absolutely vital that the language we have in this background contain that understanding that, that, yeah, so maybe you were 20 when you committed something horrible and, and maybe you have rehabilitated yourself. That does not necessarily mean you have the right to work for the city of Albion. And so I think that that's, you know, I think language and maybe adding a time component might help. But I think in the end, the final analysis is we are in no position, given our financial state, or any city is in a good financial state, to be sued by a citizen of that city for not protecting them or their loved ones at the hands of an employee of the city. So, I think that that's the thing, we have to be afraid. We have to be very afraid of that because that could, that could ruin us. And so I think having that in the back of our minds as you're crafting this, I think what you did here was great. I, I completely understand Councilman Barnes's position and I can understand Councilman Reed's responses as well. But I think in the end, we need to protect our city and that's the thing that's first and foremost in my mind.
Correct. So, do we have a motion to table?
So moved.
To move?
Yeah, I'll take you, I'll take, yeah.
You moved and Garrett seconded? Okay. All in favor, say will table list for what date?
April.
The third Sunday in April?
20th, I think.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
What?
The 20th.
Was it the 20th?
20th, yeah.
For the 20th? All opposed, the same? Okay. Passed to be tabled for April. Future agenda items? The only thing I want put back on there, we'll, we'll make a disc, uh, the lay of science position, whether we will continue with it or take it away. Okay. Motion to excuse absent council member?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Thank you. Citizens' comments. Person's addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than five minutes. Proper decorum is required. Any citizens' comments this evening? Step forward with your name and address, please.
We're getting off early.
Mike Bearman, 1101629 Mile Road. Like I said, I'll be here at the second meeting of every month and I will try to bring an update on what's happening over at the county. And I'll try to bring you a little bit of an update on what's happened at the schools. I was absolutely static about the choir today and I thought they did a tremendous job. Also, with the schools, another thing is, at our last meeting, we recognized five kids that took the test and qualified for the Math and Science Center, one of which was in the top three in scoring. So, bar none, we are coming back. We're coming back with vengeance and we are gonna be one of the top schools around. And also, you know, I'm glad you're talking about the, um, thing about the background checks. Be at least what the school system is because with the recreation department coming in and that sort of thing, we really don't want two different ones or drastically different because they have to work together and they, basically, they have to have a lot of the same qualifications with that. Getting on to the county, I was eligible to be at one of the, oh, programs that they had the other day on the GIS and was really floored by how good the GIS system looks and that sort of thing. And I was glad to see a couple of your people over there sitting in on that also. I also wanna give you that I've been placed on five different boards. And some of the boards that I've been placed on is the Area Agency on Aging, the Workforce Development, the Potawatomi Conservation Board, the Kehon County Trailways, and the Senior Millage are just a few of the ones that I've been working with and trying to bring back information for you and make sure we're all going on over here. Also, when I was at the Homer Village meeting, the first one, I was eligible, I was there, sitting there, talking, watching what was going on because I tried to sit through the whole meeting. And by sitting through the whole meeting, I found out some things and I forwarded them on to Cheryl and to Jerry Lynn on what they're doing to try to bring people back to their community and that sort of thing. We've gotta work as, we've gotta work as a region. We can't work as individual units. And I think we are more and more all the time. I was really impressed with the young lady that was up here talking earlier. She's right on, we've gotta work as a community and work through a lot of this stuff and we are. So, thank you.
Are there any further citizens' comments? If not, I will ask for a adjournment to the executive session.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, the same? We're going into executive session. Uh, we have two meetings down there before we'll be back up here to adjourn. It could last anywhere from 30 minutes to three hours. So, if you would like to sit up here and wait for us to return, that's up to you. But I wanna thank you all, if you're leaving tonight, for coming. We appreciate it. Oh, whoa, 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 whoa. Cheryl gave my office away.
Yes. So, just move back there. Yeah, I'm sorry.